Well, first I'd like to thank you for funding to the board. I've told you that before personally, but officially at a meeting. It's a privilege to be Monzuma County's representative to Southwest. We've talked about a lot of water issues. I really appreciate where the county is, you three commissioners in particular, in terms of protection of the water rights that we have in this community. As you all know, that's something I've been described as having a passion for, for a lot of years. I sketched out some thoughts where I could bring just kind of shotgun comments on issues I'm involved with. I'd like to be coherent. This time was asked for by a couple of you people to do this on a more regular basis with the commission, and I think that's a really good idea. I'm a firm believer in all of us being educated in this business in order to do it right. It's a gift of self-government that we have, and all of these pieces are part of that. So, I can shotgun, I've got some thoughts, I'd like to be coherent. You and I visited out at the expo that sometimes I'm more coherent than others. I get buried in the weed and lose people. And I think burying in the weeds is really important. We all need to be better versed in history. Why we got where we are, all of those kinds of things. So, I'll probably go there some in these sessions. But I could do it as a Q and A, I could shotgun these thoughts. As I went to sleep last night, I thought it might be of value to just do a quick history lesson about who Southwest is, how they fit in the context of where we are. So, with those kind of three options on the table, and not knowing exactly, Melissa's got me for 15 minutes today, but I only want to take up time that's valuable and useful. So, I'd look to you for guidance, which of those three paths do you want me to start down on?
I think history is going to be a good start on.
I think so too.
History of Southwest.
And then at the end of your presentation, we have something we would like to get your thoughts on, your advice.
Okay. And if we have time from there, if I do that quickly enough, then that kind of sets the context for the issues that are really important, that Southwest allows me to be more involved with than I was before, that we all need to be aware of because they're ongoing. They've been ongoing really from the time we settled this country. That's part of the history. And that context of how they've been ongoing to me is critical for us to understand. So, I'll just real broad, but a big sweep. The state's a prior appropriation state in our state's constitution, state law. Prior appropriation, beneficial use, first in time, first in right, and a really critical component of it, and especially to this community. Prior appropriation means you take the water from the streams where they are, and you take it to the place where they're needed in order for us to survive and live and do things out of basin. That's what we did, our predecessors did in this community in the 1880s, and allowed us to even be a community. Prior appropriation is state law. It's the law of our state, it's the law of most western states. Prior appropriation was gonna maybe hurt our state. Colorado folks saw it as California was developing early, which led for this state to take the lead in developing Colorado River Compact. Negotiated in the 1920s, got there, the reason it was negotiated, and it was a compact. So, an agreement amongst the states that we're not going to have prior appropriation across state lines. It was they allocated the river, the whole Colorado River among the seven states. That was done because California was really developing, and Creole Valley was really developing. They were pulling all of the river. They might have had the right to it all, first in time, first in right. And they really needed some federal help to build Hoover Dam, Lake Mead, for flood control protection. And that's what really drove the compact, was the federal dollars were the way the states to come together. So, we're overlaid with federal law and state law from the beginning, even compact. They're really critical. Compact issues is where I'm kind of going, because that's where we are today. Mead was built and yet finished in the depression years, early 30s. After it was built, reclamation, Bureau of Reclamation has become the federal agency, as we'll back up in a minute, in terms of first in time, first in right. It's easy for a farmer in a small creek to go dam it up, pull the water out, put it on his fields, and keep going. Small river, little harder, can still do it. Front Range really was developing, the rivers, they were doing things. Bigger ditches, pulling more of the river, that took a mutual ditch company. All of those were prior to reclamation, the federal agency in 1902 when it was passed, and it was reclamation that pushed the effort to do Mead, Lake Mead. But you needed the bigger federal picture to have enough dollars to do your really big kinds of projects. It's just kind of in order to develop and use the water of the west, you gotta do all those things. So, once Mead was built, where are we in the states? And so, even though it was depression years, a really important basis for this state's agencies that are dealing with water were laws that were passed in the 1930s, late 1930s. I don't have my dates exactly right, let's say 1936, 35. The first three, the acts were passed that are pressed that Southwest is built on, there were three agencies that were created. And so, rather than just to have these agencies, you needed to have a broader law to allow that to happen. So, the three, I mean a broader statewide way to deal with the issues. So, the three kinds of pieces of state water government that were created in the 30s were Colorado Water Conservation Board, the state board, with its authorities and policies. Denver was trying to do a bigger trans-mountain diversion in the 1930s. It was actually one, Denver, it was greedy, and it was really to, not for municipal use, but because the front range rivers were too small, and the farmers had more demand for water and more land to put it on, then they had water. And so, they wanted to pull some of the water out of the, after Colorado, to put over there and keep them with a late summer supply. Same reason we got Mead or McPhee many years later, but same process, how to do that and provide a security to their water supply, that was Colorado Big Thompson Project. So, had Conservancy District Act, which set up an agency like Northern, which is like Dolores is, Northern Colorado Water Conservancy, Dolores Water Conservancy. Conservancy, it needed out of the Conservancy Act to have the local agency to administer the local project for their community. And at that time, there wasn't a drive and need yet on the west slope for a project specific to balance what might be happening with pulling west slope water to the east slope, but there was still the fight already between the east slope and the west slope. We can't go there. It just can't be done. And so, in order for it to be done, they not only had Conservancy District Act, but they had the Conservation District. And so, the first Conservation District that was created was the River District, as we call it, Colorado River Water Conservation District. And so, in all three of those agencies, water is driven by basins. Basin of origin, that's a place, that's a term that's come since then, but you've got to deal with the basin, with the water that's in the basin, where it comes from, and then you've got to figure out how's the appropriate way to move it out of those basins and those kinds of things. But it was still the concept of basins to talk about water was implemented in Colorado water law. And so, all of the basins covered by the Colorado River were part of the River District to be the counter, plain and simple, to Northern and the Conservancy, its Conservancy Act and the Big Thompson Project. So, if you're going to pull some of our water and you're going to get your deal as a state, we think that's really important, but you can't leave us in the dust. Same kind of fight in some ways as there was with the compact between the states, where you didn't want, Colorado didn't want California to be pulling all of the river first. You gotta talk to each other and figure out how you're doing things.
Let me ask you a question here. Why is the Dolores Project, McPhee, and the Dolores River, and the San Miguel, and those are all tributaries to the Colorado? Why are we not included in that River District compact?
Because none of our rivers get to that river in the state line.
It's all in Utah.
So, it's the political boundary.
So, politically...
Political, John Wesley Powell, when he first came out here, he suggested all the states should be designed to follow drainage, to avoid those kinds of problems.
It made sense, wouldn't it?
It wasn't done, but you're still after the fact. And that wouldn't have been a perfect system either. But literally, I mean, I got into a discussion with Bruce Whitehead just to stand on an answer about that. I still, as I've spent my years in this business and studied the law, and we're, I call us a trans-mountain diversion, because we were treated under trans-mountain law. Bruce is, who's more astute in some ways than me, comes at it from the administrative side and the detailed side, as opposed to the layman's side that I come at it. No, Don, that's not right, it's all trans-basin. But I do it deliberately because of the question you asked me. The reason that we get treated differently than other trans-basin diversions in the state are because of that really important political boundary of being a state boundary, where you lost administration of the water as it gets back to the main stem, where you can make it whole again when your tributaries come back whole. I mean, prior appropriation let you pull it out of a creek and use it where you needed, but you had to make the river whole with return flows. And as the tributaries left and did their thing, and the water did its thing, and then it made its way back with a lag time, but it was still under Colorado's administration all the time. For instance, in the Gunnison, one of the very first early rec projects was the Gunnison Tunnel, that serves Uncompogri Valley water users. And so, Mark Atlin and I had this discussion at Atlin's meeting this spring. Now, we're trans-mountain too, Don, but they are, but they aren't, because they have every right to pull every bit of the Gunnison through their tunnel into the Uncompogri, but Colorado still controls it to where the river, the Gunnison, gets made whole again downstream of the confluence of the Uncompogri with the Gunnison. That's when Colorado can make it whole, and it's fine to pull it out in between those places. And so, as you administer fairly amongst all your state participants, you make everybody whole in priority below where your return flows come in. Yeah, all of those physical pieces of water administration are critical as you go to water court to protect your right under prior appropriation and all of those issues. So, the River District is the whole Colorado River, but where it hits the main stem and leaves the state, except that they include the Ampa and the White, which are two separate tributaries that leave in the northwest in the River District. And probably they were included because nobody could tap into us at that point in time. We're separated by the Rio Grande, but the Front Range, I mean, the east slope was tapping into us north of there. So, it was a year or two after the River District was formed that Southwest was formed. And so, three agencies in the state still have legal, legislatively written responsibilities for compact compliance of the Colorado River. So, those three agencies are the Colorado Water Conservation Board, the statewide board, who's the most powerful, the most strong, I mean, probably has the most strength in those responsibilities, but also the River District and Southwest. And so, that was all the kind of history where I felt was important, because one of the main agenda items in terms of talking about that I now have a more official role to play, being Southwest board member from this county, where I've taken a more active interest maybe than other board members there, because I see a really potentially impact in our community in a really, really strong way is the, what's, you've heard little bits and pieces about this, but it's had different names, but the West Slope or the Colorado River Water Bank Group.
What is the mission statement of the Colorado Water Conservation Board? What is their purpose?
Well, it wouldn't be described as a mission statement, but it's the legislative responsibilities that are written into the state statutes. So, I've looked at some of that, I've seen pieces of it when I got on the, it's very similar to Southwest. But it's the two key pieces for all three of these types of, three of these agencies, the umbrella agencies, meaning the River District, Southwest, and the State Board, as opposed to the project-specific Northern's Conservancy District or Dolores. But develop, defend, and protect the water of the state within your district's boundaries. And so, prior appropriation, it's a property right, but it's a property right by use. And even in our state's constitution, it's a, that, John could help me with the language better, but it's that use property right, where if you don't use it anymore, you lose it. That's kind of the concept. And so, for a lot of years, develop and protect may be the two key words that I would say all three, the State Board and Southwest and the River District are charged with the balancing act of defend, develop, protect. So, you defend against outsiders coming after your share. You'd have to develop to put it to use. So, for decades, a long, long time, the main mission was develop.
The reason I ask that question is because I had, Leanne bringing this up, that these are the creeks that are in Monzuma County, actually, you have to scroll down.
Okay.
That Colorado, you can find Monzuma County.
And that's a really good place to do it, Larry.
The Colorado Water Conservation Board is suggesting that they do inflows in our county, as well as the water. And so, I'm not, can you explain how that works? If they pump for inflow and they grant inflow, yes, it would be a junior right. But would that mean that their water would be allowed to flow through the dam? Or is it stopped at the dam?
The reason I ask that question is if there should be Monzuma County...
Keep going. So, the ones in the upper Dolores, that would flow in above McPhee? Since they're junior, then they can't be called through the dam? Because the dam is senior to the junior rights. But that's a perfect place.
And the reason I ask that is if it really doesn't matter, number one, why are they filing on it? And number two, if it does matter, should Monzuma County be in opposition to the filing of the inflames, in-stream flows?
And here, I'll give you a simple answer, but there's not a simple answer. But yes, the county should be very interested. Let me back up a minute as I ask your question, because this is a, this is a perfect place to just kind of go to the next, to the very important concept that we've got to deal with. Federal law, there's been a lot of squabble, and especially in recent decades.
You don't have the whole list there.
I'm sorry, it was all over on that list, that you can't find it?
I know the list.
Okay.
I know what's up there, I've watched it, I know the industry.
There's like five in Monzuma County. Go ahead, I'm sorry, Don, go ahead, we'll keep looking.
But a lot of folks from outside of prior appropriation states don't like the idea of pulling it out of a river to another use. And so, there's been a lot of pressure to put it back into the stream. So, a lot of our federal environmental laws have got the way to come in and push on Colorado to try then and quit pulling your water out of creeks, because you've got to rescue the river parts that are, have values that are more important maybe in some ways today than they were 100 years ago. That's debatable, but anyhow, that, those political pressures are extremely accentuated. The In-stream Flow Program was the state's way to try and bring a state solution to those federal pressures, where they would be much more able to adapt it appropriately to the needs within the state. And so, the In-stream Flow Program started in 1972, I think. And one of the big problems, in terms of why it's a complicated answer to your question, everything else is pulled out of a stream and put to use, and you owe things back to the stream for other users. And so, it's points, where you pull it out, and then return flow points, and there the river gets its wholeness back. And so, it's all between points. An in-stream flow is between points, it's in the river. So, it's a round peg in a square hole. And so, that's why they gave it that right, to have an in-stream flow right exclusively to the Water Conservation Board, so that since it's a square peg in a round pole, they're the ones that are whole, they're supposed to be the ones to do the appropriate balancing against how that has the power that it does. And one of the reasons it has extreme power where it's not points is where it's reaches of the river, is because another subset of prior appropriation, you can do a lot of changes, that's all become through in case law and as you go down the path, but you have to not, as you make changes with your water right, you can't damage even the junior users as you change your water right use, or somebody else buys it, or as you do changes, the juniors can't be damaged as you do your changes with your senior priority right. And so, Sam Main's taught me a lot about how this works, and the way he described it to me in that more layman's way, even though he's really a astute water lawyer, it's a case of the tail wagging your dog. When you got that junior right, that's an in-stream flow right, that's through some reaches then, that becomes the most powerful right on the river. And so, in order to keep that tail from being, outwagging the dog, that's why the state gave that authority to the State Board. And that's then one of the key components that I think that the In-stream Flow Program has, particularly in my view, it's overreached its legal authority on what it has done on the Lower Dolores. That's my own personal view.
So, would you suggest that the commission, see, we've already been in this battle once when the Veale Land bought the monument, the Wallace property, and John fought that. I know it'd be a hard battle to win, but if it has some...
I think that my, there's not a simple answer, but the little guy, small water rights holder, the individuals, they're the ones that really have a difficult time with water court and all these issues, because it's got too expensive for them and over their head, where even though they got all the legal rights, they don't, the benefit cost ratio of protecting your individual rights outweighs what you can do as an individual. And so, then the bigger entities, and Monzuma County's a little entity in this perspective, and so is Southwest, and some places so is the state, depending upon who the bigger entities that you're in a squabble with, with the feds or whatever else. But every stair step up in our governmental authority to help reach down and help the individuals, including Monzuma County's, on these issues can be helpful to find the way. You've got a partner, you've got a team up. This is a key place where Southwest has a more major role to play, but Southwest has to represent its whole district. We can't do as good of a job of representing Monzuma County's individual interests. And so, we've got to figure out how to do the teamwork together.
What if there was a team of Monzuma County, MBI, and Dolores Water Conservancy District?
And here again, it's the legal side of this, where the team, that legal team is somewhat hard to put together, driven by how, you know, the obligations, ethical obligations of the legal side to their clients and those kinds of things. But no, politically, those teams, so you've got to wrestle with the legal side and then the political side. The political side of the teamwork is critical. I just emphatically go there. It's more critical than ever. That's a big piece of why I'm trying to provide the foundation of education, Larry, Don. That's why I approached this today in the manner I did, because it's that teamwork. I mean, you've got to get there in order to understand whether it's Water Bank Work Group, In-stream Flow in state legislature, this legislative outreach that Southwest does, you know, the service we provide as you look at different pieces of legislation. We've all have got to get more versed, be better team players within all of these pieces, because it's really hard to find the simple black and white answer to the simple place, whether it's a piece of legislations that's introduced this year or whatever, to know where we are. But we've all got to get a little more aware of the process.
That goes into my second question. So, I've been, all the water issues in Monzuma County the last couple of years, I've been doing a lot of study and networking about water rights, because it's probably the number one issue in all the counties. With no water, you can't have any farming in our community, but that's our biggest economic driver in this county, so without that, we'd be in serious trouble. I got to studying this Colorado Water Congress, and I started noticing membership, and I started noticing county membership. And there's four counties, maybe there was five, but one of the counties that was a member, I think it's a thousand dollars if a county's a member of this organization. And they have a meeting, maybe once a year in Denver, I'm not sure how many they have.
They have two main meetings, a summer meeting and an annual meeting that are conferences that do education outreach, but they do lobbying all ongoing and committee work ongoing.
And I'd under, the way that I understood this correctly, if you're a member of the Colorado Water Congress, you're also a voting member? Is that, is that true?
I think that's true.
Okay, I think, I think that's right.
I'm not well versed on Water Congress.
Where I'm getting at on this is that Garfield County, which is a county that we have a lot of the same issues, is a member. And so, I asked one of their commissioners, you know, why are you a member of the Colorado Water Congress? And they said, we feel that it's important that we educate ourselves on water as much as possible because of it being an economic driver in their community as well. Would you recommend that Monzuma County become a Colorado Water Congress member and send a commissioner to their annual meeting once a year?
Yes. I mean, and this is literally, I mean, all this, I'll bounce back to Southwestern, because that legislative report, you know, that they do, we have calls weekly to follow this. The reason that Southwest has taken that lead in this community and provides the legislative updates by email to anybody out of the public in our district, in district-wide that wants it, is because Southwest is, uses their membership in the State Affairs Committee of Water Congress. Because Water Congress does all the lobbying on water issues and are quite successful within the state for sure, all the time. And the State Affairs Committee is just this, I don't know, 50-person committee, but you've got to pay more money to be part of the State Affairs Committee, and they have weekly meetings in Denver every Monday, I'm pretty sure I'm right on that. So, we, Southwest sends the two staff people that they own are both participating in that State Affairs meeting, so that they can help represent Monzuma County and everybody else in their district in this. But no, here again, part of that broader teamwork, Larry, Don, I'd absolutely say that's a good place. I'm really happy to see MBI actively engage in Water Congress now and sending people to their conference. That's really important to our community as well, county. Here again, all that teamwork place, that's a good place. That's where I've learned a lot of what I know about water, at Water Congress, in my years here. Just looking at your, if you guys run this, I'm here as long as you want me, and keep going.
Yeah, I've got one thing I'd like to bring up. Up at the Club 20 meeting, we had some people from the state water board and different, some water districts, and their big push now is this called Integrated Water Management Program, where they're starting to take and they're trying to find where, on certain pieces, types of crops, different crops, where they can irrigate, have like a half irrigation season on them, irrigate one irrigation, skip an irrigation, and then start putting this water into a water loan program, where now they're starting to, they're starting to find ways...
Back up a minute, Kenan. Where did you start learning about this?
At Club 20, they had a, yeah.
Okay, keep going, now I know where you're going.
Yeah, there was a Mr. Herford, I think, Bob Herford, that was doing a lot of the talking on this.
I'll interrupt you. Water Bank Work Group, they're tied hand and glove together. Keep going, that's your question.
But that, to me, it's another way of... But that, that, to me, it's, it's another way of starting to take water that's already, that's got a prior appropriation of water right, and convincing people to start doing things with their water that doesn't relate to their land, where they're starting to want to say, hey, you don't need to irrigate your land that much this summer, we, why don't you give us that water so we can send it down and start building up the Lower Compact and Lake Powell, and we need to start using that water to provide our commitments down to the Lower Compact people there.
Do you want to hear my, nutshell view?
Yeah.
Of Don's viewpoint? This is why I'm so actively interested in that Water Bank Work Group. The whole concept of that was driven initially with kind of fallow in land, I mean, figuring out ways to U.S. Water to do something close where you don't gut your community as you pull some water away.
Buy and dry, but you start, you start easing it out.
And so it's wired into the state's Colorado Water Plan. It's wired in, the whole concept is wired into a ton of these interrelated water issues, all thrown into the, that with the caveat, gee, this is designed to avoid buy and dry, but there's absolutely zero teeth, that's just kind of a fantasy wish list that it's going to avoid buy and dry. And in the meantime, they've been working on this, this concept for over 10 years, and they're moving ahead with federal legislation, state legislation to facilitate and make it work better without any comparable, long-term piece of solution to build the appropriate sideboards, so that it has a limit to its use. And so I'm a strong advocate of saying, until you get the sideboards, it better be a timeout. We better have, whoa, we don't want to be passing any more laws or designing the laws that are going to facilitate. All we've done is facilitate buy and dry.
Buy and dry, yeah. You made it my, it's another step to it.
And I've made people quite angry at me that are supposed to know more about this and are in a higher position than me to implement it. As I make this case, I'll stand my ground and try and get them to, don't get mad, let's sit here and talk this out and make sure that my fears don't come to pass. If, if, because my fears are really legitimate, and I think that reasoned discussion will get us there. And that's part of the given taking that we all need to know. I mean, it wasn't a crazy idea to put on the table, because it was initially really put on the table first in the Republican River over on the east slope, to meet a compact requirement that had already come between, you know, Supreme Court, federal Supreme Court between states to wrestle with that issue. And so the fear that we might be wrestling with that on the Colorado River and the Upper Basin against the Lower Basin, they're legitimate concerns that we've got to be at the table designing a solution for, but you've got to be really careful as you do those things. But no, my fear is stronger than yours, Kenan, or maybe not, but semi-equal.
Similar?
I'd suggest, I guess, yeah, we've got some real similar concerns. Sure do.
I've got a couple more questions. There's a heated discussion last week in Denver at CCI over lack of funding for various special programs. So they pitted two programs against each other, and I want, and one of them was the Round Tables against the aquatic nuisance, the mussels. Which program is more important if you could only find one? I know that's a hard question, and maybe, but it was a...
I'd get in trouble if I just take my flat-out opinion. Jim's there in the audience to write a... But I can answer, and I will. That's just who I am. I'm not a very good politician. But today, the aquatic nuisance program is the one that's got to get those dollars. Round Table was another piece that's on my list that I have significant concerns about that in the matrix of where we're going in the future, it's got a lot of clout, they're trying to pour a lot of money into that. I would frankly, I don't think the money, James has sat there as much as me, I've watched the handing out of the money, I don't think it has the response, fiscal responsibility associated with it that it needs to. Personal opinion, there's needs to be a few more safeguards as to how that money finally rolls out the door. I'd hate to shut the stream off. It's, there's real value in where it goes, but the aquatic nuisance problem in terms of the short term is immediate. We really know that's money, that's going to be well spent today. That's why I gave you the, that's where my priority is in today's world. That might not be exactly the same priority five years from now, because hopefully we get the feds to come back in appropriately on the aquatic nuisance problem, because that's really a much more, that's a federal problem that we're having to take the lead on as a state, and particularly right here in McVeigh. Was that a useful answer to you? Not too long?
The last question is, so this drought contingency plan that's being formulated, that's being worked on with DWCD and MBI, and I believe that this, this plan is something that's going on throughout the state. Is that, is that correct? Is all the counties, is all of the... The reason I ask this question is this, and so that, I know that this drought consensus, this contingency plan is a plan to, when we're in a drought, we're probably fixing to figure out all about drought here shortly. But, you know, there's, there's one side that says, well, if you get your irrigation more efficient, you're, you know, you're saving water, and, but then at the same time that dries up McCallum, and they don't get as much water. And then on the other hand is the, the side that says, well, you know, maybe there should be a balance because we have all these cottonwood trees throughout Monzuma County, and we have the submoisture because there is flood irrigation, and it would change the...
Don talking. I'm going to get there in a minute, but I'm going to, it's a set little stage to answer your question. Drought contingency plan is a huge dig, deal, a really, really big deal in the whole Colorado River Basin, but it's a really, really big deal because it's a huge part of the Lower Basin, finally using their drought contingency plan and the funding to get it in place to finally quit overusing what they've been doing according to compact agreements that's caused continued overdraft on Powell, our bucket, the upper basin's bucket, to make it be artificially shorter, I mean, smaller than it should be. And if the, so that drought contingency planning in the Lower Basin is absolutely critical to the Upper Basin, the politics of that has said the Upper Basin's got to do drought contingency planning at the same time. But maybe this is my Upper Basin hat, we're not in the same place as the Lower Basin. If we could get, they call it a structural deficit, that was, is the legal way that the two basins have been dealing with each other for a number of decades on an interim basis, that has caused the Lower Basin to continue to pull more than the river provides, plain English. And they're using the drought contingency plan to stop that overdraft. And they still haven't got there yet. Arizona's in a terrible fight amongst itself, and the reason is because Arizona's the weak guy with Imperial and California in terms of the, how that whole puzzle pieces get put together. But as they push that with all the power and flout that drought contingency plans have, rightfully so in the Lower Basin, then they can have been abused as we've gone after those same contingency plans in the Upper Basin. And it's the Upper Basin as a whole who needs to generate a drought contingency plan that may tie this west slope water bank group into that in an appropriate fashion to deal with Powell's problems. But when you do ones like the Dolores District led here, that ended up with its initial language suggesting that it was fine and dandy to dry up McCallum, I was outraged as a Dolores Board member and as a community member, and I worked my tail off to improve that plan considerably. And by the time we got our final draft, it is improved to the degree that it doesn't try to de-water McCallum to the degree it was initially drafted at. Here again, all of these, this is why it's so important to have a better educated public on all of these issues, to realize how they fit in the bigger matrix of things. Frankly, I think Dolores tackled that and, you know, often these things are muddy, as we learn, so maybe I won't, shouldn't criticize Dolores for how we did that, and I'm a player there too, but we didn't, that came out flawed initially, it was much improved with the final draft. We don't have that finalized with reclamation yet for paying our grant that we got with them, but it...
Because of me...
This McCallum piece is critical to save in terms of where we are, and I'm in your camp there, and really appreciate you guys being there.
So going back to the very first of the conversation, we were talking about how it works where you take the water out, you run it through the field, and then it goes back in, you have to make the river whole again. And so if, the more that we become more efficient, so you start a sprinkler, you're not going to run any water off. If you flood irrigate, you're going to, you're going to run water off, it's going to go to adjudicated water, and then hopefully whatever's left gets back and it makes it whole. If we have a certain amount of water and we become more efficient, where does that extra water go? Does it just go straight down the river? Or is it better to...
And here, here's this global that I see us in as a community right now, and why, when I go back to the Trans Mountain piece we talked about early on, MBI has the right under Trans Mountain law to use their, and not only the Trans, MBI, but DWCD, to use their pull from the Dolores to extinction, which then puts McCallum users, in spite of having 120 years or more of use, without the legal protections that they would have at other places in the state. So I was asked, along with Bob Bragg, to do some McCallum education outreach, and the language I used there, we wouldn't have had that used to extinction law in the state of Colorado if they had chosen to design it based on our basin's Trans Mountain use. McCallum would have been in priority and stayed there. But that's a legal place that we probably won't fight and win in the courts, I don't think, layman Don. And so we as a community need to get everybody, we need to get our messaging out appropriately that we're not going to abandon McCallum. We've got to find a way, whether it takes a piece of special legislation for, to solve our place here, or whether we can do it with negotiation of how we use our contracts with DWCD and MBI together and how we're intertwined together. There are several solution paths, none are simple, they're all kind of complicated, but simple sense of fairness says we shouldn't be designing something to dry up McCallum. Literally, that's kind of where the law is today. But that's why I started out with our predecessors and prior appropriation had every right in the world to establish this community by pulling Dolores River water over here. Recent 30-year history is 63% of the Dolores's flow leaves not down the Lower Dolores, but into the San Juan by these, us Trans Mountain diverters. And there's a lot of folks that want to reduce that and have the answer to your question be, no, it's owed back to the Lower Dolores. I couldn't disagree more. We've got, if you're out the way to...
So it's owed to the Lower Dolores and not to the San Juan?
This is some people's brains.
Some people's argument.
This is all...
And they all go to the same place.
All I'm saying, that the, the law, we've got to do the education of people's brains to understand, the law may behind helping that happen, but we've got to, there's also law that, and we can build a legal case and a real strong political case that, no, we've got to do things that are right for our valley too, and for McCallum and McCallum's cottonwoods. And we've got to figure out the way then to mix that solution in a manner that's viewed by the outside world as responsible, judicious use of our pulling 63% of the Dolores River over here. And so it's, that's kind of a complicated place that we are in as a community, but we're there, and that's something we got to work really hard on, that's where my brain is, married on. That's what I'm, everything I'm doing is trying to piece those puzzle pieces together in the appropriate manner for our community, and we all need to get that team built stronger together messaging to do that. That's my political pitch to you, is sitting here as your layman and appreciating your appointment to that board.
Thank you, Don.
Have time, but... More than that. Please come back.
We'll have you back.
We're going to have to have him back, Senator, then.
She's got, right now Melissa's got me scheduled quarterly, so I've got it on my calendar, I can't remember, like July and September or something, but if we want something different, and we want, however you want to streamline this, I'll try and accommodate my schedule to you guys as scheduled.
How we get, I mean, we could have took any one of those issues and talked about them the whole time.
That's, that's me in the weeds, and I, and so however we want to do this, you guys help us decide, but right now that's where I am with Melissa. So we'll have that conversation if we want to change that.
We'll work on that.
If we change it, it won't hurt your feelings, huh?
Pardon me?
If we change it, it won't hurt your feelings.
No, I'll just, I've, I've got more, even though I'm retired now, I'm more a full-time water guy, where I got a calendar, the things that I can't change as easy as I could change my farming schedule to some degree, I mean, if you change your farming schedule, if you came to a meeting in a day, it just meant you worked, you replaced it at midnight or something. But best I can, James, and I'll try to accommodate that.
Thank you very much, Don.
Thanks, Don.
All right, thank you, guys.
Ready for a road department report, Mr. Engelhardt.
I had it right, I've been thinking about it for an hour now. Don't want to do that.
Good, how about yourself?
He's got a lot of...
You can donate my time once a week to that one, Dr. Ockley, so.
So we've got, what, nine minutes?
Well, the public plan's probably going to be short today, because Derek's not going to be here in, I assume, Marietta and Conne yard, but Derek's going to be sure.
I see you have them scheduled for a long time, so take your time.
Okay, we'll go ahead and do the schedule then. Last week in the Cortez District, we went over and helped in the Mankas District with some gravel spreading, but we did finish up all of the Road L 32P, dropped on down to 33.25 and 33.75, and got all those gravel. So it was about 10 miles of gravel we got put on there. So that's all done and completed, and then this week we're working back over on L and 26, starting to shape up those culverts and edges and shoulders and getting ready for that spring relay of asphalt there. So Cortez is kind of getting back into that mode of thinking. Mankas helped with the gravel, of course, over there on their roads, and then they went back and filled in all the driveways, they did all the approaches, and they did a lot of that extra work in there, so they're done with that. And now we're moving on into blading some roads for the next couple of weeks, we got some moisture this weekend, so that really helps to get them back out and doing that. Yep. Dolores, they've been working pretty hard on Road 32 and R, kind of looking at T. 0.5, but 32 and R was a lot of brushwork.